That's, that would be your approach, right? You go to the park, you, you dedicated the land to park, basically put grass on it. Now I need to go to the park board and work with them to improve it and how we can assess it and all that, right? Basically.
Right, so it was our engineering, working with me, and then having meetings with the park to come up with the, the approved park layout. And then the question is, how do we pay for it? You know, how do we, you know, does the developer pay for it? And that's really challenging, just because of the cost. And so our, I, I think we were thinking that we were going to have to petition the park district for improvement, an improvement district, not really knowing what their bonding capacity would be. And so I guess when we found out about the amount that was bonded for by the city, we thought there would be an opportunity to maybe utilize that money to pay for some of the park improvements. You know, the developer, Tom Samson from Morning Developments here, they're willing to take on those assessments on their back lot and carry the, the carrying costs. And so it's really just our brainchild and how we, how we can do this together.
Yeah, I was just a little confused that the park board would take the land with no park equipment?
Well, Jack, I know, I'm aware that there were meetings between the developer, Jack, and the park district for improvements to Lost River from very early on in the project. So they had many, many, many discussions over the course of months discussing improvements to the park and what the park board was looking for. So I don't think it was the intention of the park district to take a park with no improvements, although of course that is an option. And then they could certainly do whatever they'd like, but I think they were more comfortable working and having the park completed in phases, if I sum that up correctly.
Right. Yeah, so at one point we had some lots along some of the roadways and we had more of a neighborhood park as opposed to a city park or a central.
Regional park.
Regional park, yeah. And they asked us to remove some lots and make it a bigger park, which we were happy to do. We actually came to the park district with a two-scale, five-point-seven-five acre park on a large printout, like a twenty-two by thirty-six or something. And then we had two-scale puzzle pieces, like a splash pad and a wiffle ball field, softball field, a number of different amenities for a park. And the park board really picked, you know, what they wanted for amenities. You know, we had some influence, I guess, because we were there, but we, we designed the park together, but I don't know, the park board here in Horace is, I think it's been a long time since they've developed a park. So I think we all had questions about how, how it was getting funded or financed.
Which is a question, does the park board have their own bonding authority and level that they can go to, or are they under?
They have the ability to levy assessments and they haven't, I don't think they've increased it since two thousand and eight. And so I, they have been provided that information because I wrote them a memo on funding options to alleviate some of these issues, and so they are aware of it.
And certainly similar, similar to the city with the mill levy, the park board has a separate mill levy that they certainly could use that as an option, I mean, at some, if they ever wanted to. They, they've not chosen to go that route.
But as a, two separate entities, we probably have a stronger bonding ability than the park district.
Far.
Is that correct? Or do they fall under ours so that if something were to happen and the park district doesn't pay for those bonds, or we, or we have to take over those bonds?
It's two separate entities.
I, I know they're aware that they can do that.
Okay. Just wanted to know if we're connected in any way.
And then just so, just so you are all aware, this, these assessments are just proposed. That's, that's to go to a special assessment commission and, and city council.
Right. It's just to give some options and throw some ideas out there so people have an understanding of what we can go on here.
So in the end, we're just stating that the idea is, let's get a park that has something in it versus ground and then trying to figure out, as houses are coming, that kind of stuff we can do at the same time. Second is, the effect would be, your proposal is twenty-five hundred dollars is added to each homeowner's assessment, knowing basically it's kind of part of their park. And then when development is willing to carry the other portion that's remaining, which we understand you'd be assessing the other develop, portion of the development as you do it, and, but there would also be in the end a pre-large assessment that's put onto the park, but they would have that anyways if they did something with that park, so that wouldn't be anything different, right? And that's a usage of some of the money that's left over in the bond that we can do something with. Correct my, did I miss anything here?
I think that's, that's a good summary.
Okay.
I mean, we, the park assessment, they have a lot of road frontage, you know, so they would be hit with, in future phases with a larger assessment. But ultimately they're getting a five-point-seven-five acre park with, you know, some beautiful amenities. You know, it's, it's not just a piece of land. Right now there's buried storm sweaters with inlets that are designed specifically for the park features. You know, so they, they would be getting, they, they would be assessed for their portion of infrastructure serving the development, but very little of the park improvements.
Right.
And so I think, and it would be, I think our bond is over a twenty-five year period, so they would have hopefully the ability to, to pay for that assessment over time.
I'll, I'll be the bad guy. I hope the park board would understand that they're going to have maintenance to do. We just heard ten minutes ago, we can't even get a park board.
I was happy to hear that right before I got up here.
Exactly. You know, I, I love to see the real park, don't get me wrong, but I need some more confidence from the park board that they fully understand what you're wanting to do and, and what it can potentially, what they're going to have responsibility for, you know.
Yeah.
Well, whether we put anything on it or not, there's going to be five-point-seven acres that they have to maintain right now, right?
Leaves and mowing and etcetera.
Just all stuff.
Normal, normal maintenance.
Yep. And I was hoping that Representative of the Park Board would be here tonight. What, what I would, I guess, number one, I'm down here to provide you guys with some information, because it's December and we'd like to get, with whatever we decide to do, get going on it this winter so that we're ready come springtime. And, so I'm not too sure if the city, you know, buys into this idea of spending money in your bond fund for park improvements within Lost River. You know, we definitely think that it will help the development take off. I think it'll be a, a big selling point for families. You know, the other option, if the city was, you know, didn't buy into that idea, is we would probably go back to the drawing board and design some more, you know, another phase. That eight-hundred-sixty thousand dollars of money sitting there accruing interest, you know, we're already low on, on our entry to mid-level inventory, and so we would come back to you with, with potentially another phase if, you know, this wasn't a good idea. So.
What type of timeline will we know before this, you know, the initial phase of this development project is done? How much is left to finish up to determine how much money is left in that bond?
Their estimate, I think, is probably pretty close. It's a new construction, there aren't a lot of unforeseen's with the, the new construction, so it's probably pretty close to what they've presented.
So then as a city, Lucas, what are our options? Either we take that money and it is sitting in there for future needs for that development, say like?
Typically you let it, you let it sit in the fund. I don't know what advance typically carries in those funds, but it's, it's left for contingencies, which we can probably say there's probably not going to be that many, but also delinquencies. So if in the future, if someone isn't paying their, their specials for the next twenty-five years and the city has to cover it, then it can be used for that as well.
Or we can pay it back, right, to the?
Yes. Typically it's done, if you get to the end, you have this much money and you're at year twenty and you're like, well, we have enough in the fund, let's just pay it off, and then...
You can do that anytime, we can take the extra right now and say we're just going to buy down the bond.
Yeah, but typically you want to hold it in case anything arises that you need money, and then that money can be used for that improvement district over the life of that bond.
What about maintenance? Street overlay, anything like that?
Right, that's the kind of stuff you could use.
We could.
I believe so.
That, that subdivision, right now the first phase doesn't have a final lift on anything but the entrance, so that is a potential future cost that it could be used for.
Otherwise that would be another assessment that potentially could come back to the development. You also mentioned, Jack, something about, you, you have all the numbers on our end from engineering and attorney?
He has the estimated numbers.
Estimated?
The estimate that we have for the engineering agreement.
Yeah, the ones of, like, legal, I'm almost positive it's higher than our.
Yeah, I'm sure it is, but that's, it really is a drop in the bucket when you're talking about a ten-thousand-dollar legal. I mean, we're lawyers, we don't bill as much as engineers, so.
That is. That's a fact.
It's just more per bill.
No, I mean, like, engineering and legal, it's.
It is a drop in the bucket compared to the, the total.
If we were over ten percent on legal or engineering, or ten percent, twenty percent on engineering, you know, that's not going to break our, instead of eight-sixty, we're talking eight-fifty, or eight-sixty, we're talking eight-thirty. You know, so there's still, there's no change orders that are proposed from the contractor based on unforeseen conditions at this time, and we're pretty close to the phase-one improvements being complete. There's going to be some more work to do in the spring, but, you know, we could definitely close out the project, I would think, by midsummer if we don't add anything to it.
I'd be curious to know what that overlay would cost.
Okay.
I mean, I love the idea of using the money on the park, don't get me wrong, but yet seeing another expense come off for an overlay project, tell me, what would be the timeframe of when it needs to be done?
How would you even know what the cost is going to be in the future?
They estimate.
We estimate. We could go back on historical.
When we look at petroleum costs, they go like this, I mean, how do you?
Thankfully, they've slowed, they've slowed the this down, so it's a little more, a little more straight.
Let's get to the thing, too, we want to have a little bit of contingency left in there as well for just like the incidentals that come up. They will come up.
Yeah. Is that, Dream Fields had money in their account for an overlay. I believe Prairie View has money in their account, was bonded for, for overlay on that one, so it's not uncommon to do that.
Yeah. So, you know, right now with eight-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars over and above our estimated costs, you know, we could, the, the physical improvements, the vertical improvements for phase-one park, five-hundred thousand dollars, you know, that would still leave us with three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars in the bond fund.
Plus you also have, you didn't, that eight-hundred doesn't include the contingency, so we still have a contingency portion. You go back to the spreadsheet, you included the contingency.
So.
It's part of his total, so you still have seven-hundred and whatever you guys said as a contingency, part of the bond.
That's included in the eight-hundred-and-sixty number?
Oh, yeah, seven-seven-seven.
Right there, right? So the difference, even with the seven-hundred-and-seventy-seven contingency is still eight-hundred-and-sixty-three, right?
Um, the eight-hundred-and-sixty thou, eight-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars, that includes that contingency number?
Oh, it does.
Yep. That makes sense.
So you are chewing up the?
We would, yep.
Okay.
If I could interrupt, we're probably looking at a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand without really. In June you can go in, taking twenty-three thousand yards, include the revision at four-twenty yards, ninety-six-six, plus probably going to go up a little bit the next few years cost, and you got engineering inspection testing on top of that, one-twenty-five is probably what you're looking at.
Okay, so we'd be roughly down to seven-hundred thousand.
So still a month.
Yeah, still within what we're looking at for the, the bond.
And I would also add that we'd prefer to probably spend our money on, you know, current improvements rather than sitting at, you know, borrowing money and letting it sit there while we wait for these, because I don't think we're going to do the overlay for...
It would be probably five years, depending upon your build-out, you know. If we get to a certain amount of build-out, we could put that final lift on there.
So yeah, I guess our preference would be utilize that money and then, and then get more money.
So when you went to the park board, you were, and I remember you commented in finance arm, because I remember the sawmill field and the other stuff originally.
Yep.
They kind of wanted to go away from that and go towards the hockey rink and all that. Is that correct, or?
Um, yeah, it was just a collaborative process, you know, where we brought, like I said, puzzle pieces and tried different combinations in the park and, and this is kind of what we.
But there's still, this is only a portion of the park, right? So there's still like a phase-two, phase-three, if you have a softball field, baseball field.
Right.
Or greens, or greens base or whatever.
It's all, it's mostly planned out, too, if you look at the slide, you see the master plan, it's all there with the basic.
Right, okay.
So it's definitely a structure.
Right. So actually the, the remaining amenities would be a, a youth baseball field, a tennis court, basketball court, and another playground, and a gazebo.
So it's quite a bit of additional stuff, so.
Okay.
I mean, you go to the developments and things like this, they're the best developments around, I mean, by far. The, to me, the special assessments are, of course, everybody's complaining about the cost of them, it's still a good numbers.
Yeah.
So are you in need of a decision from us tonight, or this is for informational purposes? I'm right of this time?
I guess if you could give me some direction, we'd, that would be great, or else I could come back if you guys want to think about it. We, we would like to know if, if this is something the city would be interested in, if this type of scenario would be something you guys would like to do, or if...
I guess I'd say, Jack, it'd be something we'd certainly like to go over, and whether we, I don't feel we should make a decision tonight.
I think we need to bring the park board in as well.
Yeah, that's, I guess, I think we need to have someone talk with the, probably the other board and, and our engineer and our attorney, too, just to kind of make sure that that's, that's in our best interest as well. I believe it is, but I think we should probably review that. And then maybe we get back together again here in two weeks and have, complete the conversation.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Would that be enough time, Lucas?
When did I mean?
They don't, we have to, we'll have to.
Park Board is, they had to move their meeting because it was on Christmas, so.
The nineteenth, if I may.
Thank you.
To give you a list.
All right.
So realistic shouldn't be till January or something, they wouldn't even get to this or look at this really, right?
So would the alternative be, the park board, Mr. Do it, for them to go through the whole process and creating a district and, and going through the legal and the bonding and they would have to take all that on and a different, it's a long time to do, or?
That's correct with this, right? That's the other option to get.
Where they can increase their levies.
Park dri, park district will have to do it.
Yeah.
So this would shortcut the process immensely.
Yeah, I think we'll, we are meeting with the park board again on the nineteenth, and we could maybe get on the agenda in a month with the park board hopefully present, and you guys can.
It's probably the best scenario.
Yep. And if maybe you could direct your engineer and, and lawyer to maybe help us with the paperwork or how to take the next steps if this is something that you guys want to do as far as petitions, et cetera. Is that something you guys are okay with? Well, I'll get, I know it's a.
Okay.
Okay.
Frank, thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
It's Sharon. Excuse me. I see the park board has called a special meeting for tomorrow night. Do you know what that's about? It's, has nothing to do with this, I guess, is what I'm asking. That's okay, you, we could, you don't have to.
I, I think it had something to do with this, because they only had half of their members present at the last meeting, and so in order to, for them to have their discussion, they need all of their members to be present, and I think they'd like to have a discussion regarding the issue prior to, maybe Mr. Byers want to be attended. This is what I believe is on the agenda, but.
Okay.
Don't hold me to that, because I have not seen the agenda either.
Okay. So should we then come back together in a month, Jack, figure, is that what you're talking, or you want to do it in two weeks? You, you want to meet with the park board yet?
Yeah.
Our meeting's on the eighteenth, so.
You give me a, maybe a month, then we can coordinate more of the joint meeting, but your time is.
Okay. Just give us a heads up when you want to get back together again, we'll have our, get our discussion, we can go from there, how's that?
I think if we have any feedback on the eighteenth, then I can bring it to the park board on the nineteenth.
Correct.
As well, to give them insight and input from the council.
Yeah. I think that'd be good, that way they can be heads up, too, then, be a little bit better knowledgeable on what we're going to do here. Okay? Anybody got anything else on this one? Keep moving.
All right. Lucas?
Mr. Mayor, the first item that I have would be the zoning amendment for the All-American property. This was originally brought in front of the city council on November twentieth, and the council decided to table it until after the planning, or until this meeting. And this is in regard to the property that is south of here. There was a discrepancy as to what it was zoned, so we are going with C-three. The applicant applied for C-three general commercial. And then with this one, the, the planning commission recommended approval on November fourteenth.
Of the rezoning?
Of zoning it to C-three general commercial.
What is C-three?
General's commercial.
Gen, so within the, within the definition of general commercial, what would that, what would that be?
The C-three general commercial district is primarily established to accommodate those commercial uses, which by nature and operational characteristics, such as direct access, large number, number of parking spaces, require separation from other uses because of the intensity and frequency of consumer travel. All applications for rezoning to C-three commercial shall company inside plans describe it in seventy-two. And it's, it has all the permitted uses and then the conditional uses.
So when I look at that map of where this property is located, and I see that it's, you've got residential to the east, right? Is that right? Yes, east. And then I see there's that one lot to the west that, I don't know, I'd call it more industrial, but I, I'm not sure what you would really call it, with the fence around it with the, you know, to me, something that's in that area is a buffer in, that would go in between, would be more neighborhood commercial. You know, I would picture more, like, a store or something, you know, that type of commercial where it's, that's what I would picture there, which I, I mean, there is a, there is zoning for that, is that correct, Louis?
There's a store.
Oh, I, I mean, I'm just, it just is, this.
You know, it's not a store.
I understand, but it's also currently zoned residential.
No, it's not. It was never zoned residential. The guy's been paying taxes on commercial property. You guys just made up a residential, because you don't know what it is, or whoever. He, he's been paying taxes on a commercial building. We don't know what commercial it is, but he's been paying taxes. They even states it on tax, they think it is a commercial property.
And so I think that's where the question is, correct?
Yes. Which commercial it is. Like, he's trying to find it, I don't have that information. It's not residential, it's never been residential. It was industrial before that, is what I was told, because there was electrical company there.
And in our land use, it's residential.
Yeah, but I know.
On the map, it's residential.
Right, it's residential.
So the map was incorrect when it was drafted, or the map was correct?
That's our land use plan.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but there's a difference. There's a difference, though. So somehow, either if you've been paying for commercial, but it's zoned as residential, somehow that got.
Those two have nothing to do with each other. Those, those two are, those two have, those two are not tied together in any way, shape, or form.
What can that be? Because that had, that had to be registered to the county so that the county knows how much they should be assessed.
I would assume an assessor assessed them that way.
So the assessor wouldn't check to see, oh, this is zoned as a commercial or residential? If they, if it was plotted as a residential initially, which what it was, right?
Probably not initially. What happened when we went to a whole new zoning regulation back around two thousand seven?
Eight, seven, or eight?
Yeah, I think it's, two thousand seven is, is the name of it, but it probably came in in two thousand eight.
I think so, yeah.
A whole lot of things did fit from the old zoning to the new zoning. I fixed some of those things with my own property here this last summer, because the same thing happened to my property under that. It, it got rezoned to something that actually wasn't, but it was kind of close from the old map to the new map. That's, the only thing I can tell you that you, it's also how you ended up having to, I don't know if this board was involved with rezoning on Cheyenne.
Well, I don't think so. It was prior to these people.
Anyway, several houses on, on, on Main Avenue, on Cheyenne, were neighborhood, were neighborhood or town site commercial. The houses were. Again, I don't think they were assessed as commercial. They were assessed as houses. That's what I'm saying. Those two, those two don't necessarily fall on one after the other.
Then, then there were variances that were granted, and some that were intended to be apartments, and then they got, asked for variances, they pulled back to residential. They started out as apartments, yeah.
You don't get a variance for that. You, you changed, you changed the zoning. And we had, we ended up changing the zoning on the houses so they, they could be actually sold as a house.
So it, the short of the matter is that this is a holdover from trying to make the properties fit to land use.
We don't know.
I think there's some uncertainties.
Yes. I can't say for sure.
I mean, right now, right now, we don't even know what it's currently zoned as. We do know it's residential, it's zoned as residential.
We, it's zoned as residential on our map, but they're paying taxes as commercial, so.
It was bought as commercial property. I bought it as a commercial property.
So you weren't aware of this difference?
No, I had it surveyed, and then all of a sudden it came back as a residential property.
Okay, word, I missed it. When did it get zoned residential?
Kevin, I missed it. When did it get zoned residential?
You're asking a question that I can't possibly answer.
To me regardless, there's a commercial building on it.
I will point out that on Main Street, there were houses on commercial property.
You remember that, John?
Right.
Can I ask, you rezoned it back to residential?
Yes, we rezoned it back to residential.
Right.
Okay, Lucas go.
If I may, regardless of what it is, this is a zoning amendment to change it to C three. So if it's residential now, if it's nothing now, if it's town center commercial, it's to zone it to C three general commercial.
Yes.
That's.
But part of that rezoning is that it breaks our rule on commercial property being adjacent to residential. If we rezone that to commercial.
Not a rule.
No, that's, that's not the portion that, that is an issue. The portion is going to be
the next to the conditional use permit and the variance.
Correct.
This could be C three.
What are the other choices?
C one, C two. It's neighborhood commercial, town site commercial. Gem or the kind of things like a convenience store, whatever, something that you might actually see on the corner. A little more well-traveled corner, but on the corner of a, of a neighborhood.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna ask the question of, okay, let's throw away all that type of stuff, but if we were to say what would be the use of this land, who would put a house across the street from that existing stuff that's there? I want to know if that's going to be residential. Who would pay the money to do that?
You know what I would see there if you were going to put a house? I'd see like a small apartment building, you know, a couple apartments. So housing, but I mean.
I think we'd get more pushback from putting apartment there than putting a, if it was, say fenced in and some criteria like that, a commercial usage. Because you're going to have much more traffic. We've already stated that's going to be a truck road. We're talking about, yeah, we're talking about truck road and that kind of stuff. And if we were to buy it as the city, we were going to do the same thing. We're going to put building up there that would have equipment in it. It could be used for those types of things, I guess. That's what I'm just trying to get to is what would you use it for if you said, no, we're not going to let them do it. We're going to put it at residential. It would be an unused land.
I see neighborhood commercial as an ideal in that spot, but.
Because I think when we were talking about this back and we were looking at, we were, we were thinking it was a commercial property.
Correct.
I mean, let's get serious. That's what we were thinking. Phil, Lucas.
The reason that C three was picked is because C three is across the street and that you don't want to start just having.
Right. But that was the impression I believe most of us were under at the time too, when we were looking at that, that's what that property was across the way too. So.
Why did planners only did their due diligence in going through this?
You know, I think if we, if we had what we would want, we wouldn't want a commercial to be in that location unless it was a neighborhood commercial. The same as if this building ceased to exist, what would we expect to see here? But residential. And that's what we would expect in this area.
So you're going to spend.
It's just my two cents.
You're going to spend that kind of money for a house to crash and.
Yeah.
But basically you're not.
I don't see it.
So the, the point is, so planning and zoning has approved this change to C three.
Okay, so, I mean, I guess as far as I'm concerned, I don't, you guys see something really, really wrong. Yeah, I don't.
I make the motion to approve it.
I'll second that.
John makes a motion and Dave made a second to approve C three. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Move on to the next one.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the next one we'll go to is the variance because that's how the planning commission addressed it, was the variance first. This is done because without the variance, you can't do the conditional use permit. And so with a conditional use in C three, it has to be two hundred feet away from residential. And so with the variance, my interpretation of the city's ordinance is the variance would be for that two hundred feet saying that because that building is there, they cannot meet that. And so the variance would get them within that two hundred feet of a residential district. The planning commission did address this at their last meeting and there was no recommendation. It was a two-two tie vote. So then they wanted to send it to you guys with no recommendation.
No recommendation, okay.
So they had no, no suggested option for the landlord to say, okay, we need you to do X, Y, Z to, if this is approved.
That's, this is for the variance.
This is strictly the variance.
For the conditional use, there can be conditions and we'll get to that.
With, without the variance, there cannot be a conditional use permit. When he said interpretation, there's a different interpretation. We have, Lucas and I have differences in interpretation of the ordinance.
Right.
I'm saying you can't do a variance for this purpose. He says you can't, different interpretation.
Okay.
So Russ, can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Variance is for dimensional purposes only for front yard setback, side yard setback, rear yard setback, building height. Those are the only things that variance can be used for by definition of variance in our ordinance. It doesn't say you, and it specifically says you cannot do a variance for use. And here again, it's a difference in interpretation. I'm saying that if you do a variance to get a conditional use permit, you're doing a variance for use. Lucas, speak up here.
And my, my interpretation of the, the use would be basically switching in and interpreting or having your own use in there and using that as your variance, saying I want to use it for this and then just kind of make up your own instead of what's listed in the city's ordinances.
Okay. Any questions or discussion on this?
Yeah, I have a question. Where, I'm, I'm looking at a, at a map. Is your existing buildings right? Are they over here? Okay.
We own five of the buildings on Four Street, so we're growing.
Okay.
And that's already.
So what, right now, were you trying to do or wanting to do with this land?
We're putting overflow plumbing in the yard, excavations on the equipment, so we're taking it out of the block so we're not dragging that through Four Street.
Yep.
So relieving pressure from the block and people's upsetting over that.
Right.
To this other block.
Okay.
So that mostly road, proposed road comes in, it would be easier for us to get everything out of there, but we're not moving the bigger equipment.
Through, through the development, which is your only route right now.
What is the variance for then?
The var, the variance is because a conditional use permit cannot be granted on C three within two hundred feet of a residential.
Because it backed, the property backed to residential neighborhoods and we have a letter. And we've had, we had residents here in our last meeting.
You have one letter.
Yeah.
My plumbing shop, just a block over, is not two hundred feet from a commercial, from a residential property. So my other shop is.
And we're not, we're not here to discuss the other property.
It's, it's like that now.
But we're not here to discuss that. I mean, I tend to agree with Russ. I don't think that changing a use in, within two hundred feet of a residential property is appropriate. I, I mean, commercial, that's fine. Inside the building, that's fine.
It's, it's right now you can use it for a boat dealership. She's saying I can put thirty boats or fifty boats in a lot?
Inside the building.
No, it's not.
Oh, well, you just agreed, you know, to put a C three, you could, you could do that.
I can put fifty boats in that lot, start them up every night.
You can do a car dealership if you wanted, right?
So what's the difference?
So it is as a C.
So I vote no.
Okay.
You have to have a motion.
Yeah, I know, I was, I mean, we're not there yet, Sharon, but go on to variance one more time, Lucas, with your interpretation of it so we can hear it from your, I want to hear your.
Uh, so yeah, just my deal is, right now, I, I believe that he can't meet that two hundred feet threshold, obviously. And so mine is that that two hundred feet is considered a setback. So with that building there, he cannot meet that. So he needs a variance to say, hey, the building's there, that's my undue hardship, I can't move it. May I have a variance and waive the two hundred feet requirement?
What do you guys think?
Well, the problem is if we grant the variance, I mean, you're planning on using it, we have, then the city essentially has no control over how that land is used in the future.
That's not, well, with the conditional use permit, you set conditions. If he fails to keep up with those conditions, then you can pull the conditional use permit and then he cannot use the property.
We're not, we're not here to define what those conditions are, though.
Once we get to that, they want to.
You know, the challenge is, we, we don't give variances for somebody to put a shed closer than eight feet to their property line. And yet, in this case, we're talking.
You just gave variance to the guy on the street for twenty-five feet.
We're talking about, we're talking about a variance right next to a resident, right next to a bunch of residential houses. I mean.
So I, I'm going to ask the question of if we own this land as a city and we wanted to use it to put equipment on and put a parking lot and put our sand or salt, you, you know, holding area and that kind of stuff, would we have the same problem as a city? Would we be running into these same issues?
Which was our plan.
Which was our plan. That was what we were going to use that land for.
Your city does not get to do anything it wants, any place it wants.
Right, so we'd have to go through this similar process?
The city would probably rezone it to public facilities district.
I mean, we were going to do the same thing with it. How can I sit here and say, well, we can do it, but somebody who's already established with a business in here can't. Who's two blocks over, is potentially going to solve our truck route and alleviate a pain and suffering that we've had. It's hard not to agree with.
Brian, you have?
I'm so torn because it, rightfully, there should be a buffer, but we have no option. I mean, there's, there's no way that we could do something in between that residentially resolve this issue with our ordinances. Look at Lucas, go for it.
Uh, just so you know, you can put conditions and one of the conditions that the planning commission discussed was a buffer, a buffer zone. Where they couldn't do anything within so many feet of the property line to the east.
So if we said, okay, fifty, well, well, I'm just throwing off numbers. Would it be fifty feet? It'd be thirty feet?
Well, there's not that, I mean, there's twenty feet is what they said.
That's what I'm, I don't know. I'm just throwing off numbers.
The council can change that.
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying, the lot's not that wide. If I'm going to use it for, I mean, I can't.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of lots in this city that are zoned industrial that would be appropriate uses that don't factor residential. And this is where that two hundred feet from a residential neighborhood makes perfect sense. It's just not what you want there. I mean.
That's your opinion? That's not my opinion.
So we can also.
That's the opinion of the people who live on the other side.
One person. I was at the planning and zoning and one lady showed up and said, I listen to the, the city, equipment fired up and run out there every day, what's the difference?
So with that conditional use, we can also have a fence put up as a buffer for appearances as well.
Do you want me, do you want me to?
You're also going to beautify the situation or the lot that's already existing with a fence. You, you already have a, a lot with a building. What's really changing? And it was an electrical business before out of there, right? A business ran out.
That's what we heard. I mean.
Well, that's what we heard. I mean, obviously something ran out of it because there's a, a commercial building there.
I mean, what we don't want is those kind of buildings back into residential. That's why we have a land use plan. That's the purpose of it.
You already have a building there and you got one across the street.
I'm not disputing what's there, but you can put anything you want inside the building and that's all fine.
That's not what you just gave permission for. I can put a dealership, a car dealership, I can put fifty cars up there. And you just gave that. I put boats up there. It's just saying that this was a plumbing slash yard.
But what, what we're, what we're discussing is a variance.
That's correct, but I can do that now. I don't have to have a fence up there right now. I could put fifty cars up there and fifty boats.
So the one question.
So then what's the purpose of the variance?
Varens because it's, the building's too close.
For the conditional use.
For the conditional use.
If it's a permitted use, he would have to do the variance.
So, so we're back to what Russ said in the beginning is that is something you're not allowed to use a variance for. Is that correct, Russ?
That's my interpretation. Lucas has a different interpretation. I will point out that one of us is a lawyer and one of us is.
So one question is where does this property line land right here? Is it, is it literally that ditch? It's a drainage ditch right along here, correct? So, so these, these trees right here are considered your.
Yes.
Would be considered part of this property?
Yes, in the ditch that joins the city property.
So it's, it's basically run right about here.
That's correct.
So if this were a, if you said, okay, let's continue this area and plant that as trees, some forestry thing to be a visual slash, you know.
The trees are dead in there right now. And we put, the parking lots extended in there already because I took that to the planning or the city and got permission to put the parking lot back in. So the parking lot goes about, I suppose, five feet from the property.
So you've gone all the way back in here?
Yes.
Which I got fired.
Okay, anybody? Questions? Brian, you got anything else you want?
I don't, I don't, I don't know which side.
Yeah. Yep. I know it's not the most popular, but we take it in two ways. If we state no to this and let's say it goes back to residential, we just now have the land value basically drop and our potential tax revenue off of it goes down. Second is we have an expanding business in our city that is paying our two percent sales tax for everything that he's purchasing. So again, there's additional revenue that goes away.
But that's not going to change, Dave. It's, it's zoned.
Why? What if he decides to leave the city?
It's zoned commercial right now. In our land use plan, it's zoned residential.
I know, so if he says I want to sell that, somebody would potentially want a residential.
Our intended use of that property is for it to go to residential.
We don't, I still don't know if that was, I still don't know if that was the case. To me, if it was property tax paid for commercial, it's commercial. To me, the pa, it, it doesn't matter. It's already, we approved that for a commercial. You know, and if he could do a boat dealership out there now?
Okay, but that's not the discussion.
I mean, I know it's not a popular, but I'm leaning both ways too, but we got to come to a decision.
Is this your ultimate choice of location?
Uh, it wasn't, but I mean, it's what we, was there.
Is this one of your long-term goals to have?
No, we're, I mean, we'll grow as we can, but that's where it was to get the other businesses. We're growing the other businesses as well. I think we're the most, we're the biggest employer in horse. So if I decide, we're kind of grouping everything together so we can share equipment, we can run down lots. If I decide to go, hey, we're going to move this whole show somewhere else, you're out.
Well, I, I mean, that, so the point is, is that if we grant this variance, essentially do we then, is it subsequent task for us then to define what the conditions of that?
There are some that are laid out already.
There's some laid out already.
They, we don't have to accept them.
Okay, I haven't seen it.
We can add or subtract them.
I was going to bring this to you after.
I'm not in favor of granting the variance for use.
But the, the, the issue is, so, I mean, there's, there's lots of things that we could do to say, okay, we don't, we don't like it. I, I can't disagree with you. We don't like it, but it is what it is.
So we don't have to grant the variance, but we don't have to grant the variance.
I think I, I like the idea of granting the variance so we could get control of the conditions, the conditional use. It, it sounds odd, but you've, you've got to get one to the other, in, in my opinion.
The only way we're going to be able to resolve this issue is if, by the conditions of saying, that'll, well, in the future, we can do it today because we're, we're in some regard dealing with the sins of the past.
Exactly.
You know, the purpose of land use plan is, is exactly in a case like this where. You know, the purpose of land use plan is, is exactly in a case like this, when a property sells, to be able to have it follow the intended use, which is to follow our land use plan. That's why we have it. And so when we take this route and decide that we're just gonna scrap our land use plan and start this spot zoning thing, where we're just gonna change uses and allow people to do things that are, that is different.
If you had a vacant lot somewhere else and was more appealing, you'd have an argument with me. This isn't, this is a commercial piece of property. Hands down.
It's a commercial, it's a commercial piece of property.
Absolutely.
But there's no reason for a variance. There's no reason for granting conditional use.
Somebody can use it. Otherwise, what use does it have right now? It's been purchased. It was the same type of deal we were gonna use. I can't tell somebody that to do something different than I was gonna plan to do it myself. I can't get past that. And then if I have an opportunity to put conditional uses on it, it's a win-win.
I look at, John, you're, you were one of the first people who didn't want that property across the street to even be there, right? We don't want.
What property?
The one that's got the fence.
You're saying, okay, so there's, it's industrial, it's fence, it's commercial, whatever that property across the street is. Well, wouldn't we rather have that be residential as well?
If I have the money to buy it out and do something with, I can make that argument, but I don't. Somebody currently owns it and operates a business.
But if that, but if that property went up for sale, we then have the ability to say, hey, our land use plan, this land should be residential. That's what we're going to put it to.
How are you gonna buy that property for what it's worth compared to residential?
Somebody's gonna have to buy it, willing to spend that money.
Whether that happens at some point in time or in the future or not.
And it's not, well, the point is, it's not market, it's not marketable. So it's an irrelevant question. So.
But it's really the point of following our intended land use for that area and ultimately creating all of this as residential.
I, I don't see how residential would ever fit in there right now.
I mean, I just don't see.
But, but again, Sharon, but Sharon.
Within two hundred feet of commercial.
Three months ago, when we talked about this, you thought it was a great idea for the city to purchase that land and to do exactly what we're doing. But now, all of a sudden, it's not relevant for somebody else.
We're gonna put stuff in the building, right? Then there's no discussion, there's no argument about putting things.
We potentially would have a gravel area or whatever, two, or, or add more buildings too.
We weren't gonna build houses.
I mean, I know this is against our land use plan. I'm just trying to look at.
Okay, that really isn't true. It really is. When you're talking about a land use plan, that is not the zoning ordinance. You're talking about two different things. And Jimmy brought in, well, I have no idea if this is the one that was officially adopted or not. Well, I don't think it is because it's got all four dots. Anyway.
I found the map. I lost.
Anyway, and I, and I really hate to point this out, looks to me like it was, uh, industrial, which should have never been done on a land use plan because that has to be a thousand feet from houses. So.
So is that the land use map or is that the zoning map?
The zoning, the zoning map is over there. The zoning map is the, is the official zoning of the city.
Current, right? Current zoning of the given.
Current. Yeah.
Don't.
Two years of work.
So the point is, is that it's all over the map. It's, it's just flat wrong any way you look at it. So.
So Jim, it's, it's, if we looked at that right now, it'd be called industrial, right? And that is.
No, no, that's, that's, that is not zoning. That's future.
This is what your intent for that area was according in your two thousand and.
So not residential is the point.
Okay. Motion to approve the variance. Second.
Okay, John makes a motion, Dave does a second. Um, approve the variance. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, Terrence is no. All right.
With conditions. We got, there's gotta be conditions.
That's the next one.
So there's gotta be conditions on it.
I just sent you guys that email. It had the current ones in them.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the next item we have is for the conditional use permit. Um, as previously stated, the planning commission discussed this as well. Uh, they had no recommendation. It was a two to two vote on this. However, there were conditions put and the entire planning commission had a say in the conditions that were placed, um, on the conditional use permit and they're up on the board now. With these conditions, these are recommendations from the planning commission. The ordinance states that you take these now and you can amend them as you see fit or add to them, take them away.
Okay, Russ, when you guys were going through these at your meeting, um, can you give us a little background on the three? How they came to be or what, what your purpose was to put those conditions on?
The purpose was, uh, after we split on the vote and we decided we didn't make no recommendations, then I asked for them to, okay, let's, let's give the city something to work with should they decide to give a grant of conditional use permit.
Okay.
And what we, what we're trying to get is much separation as we can. Uh, and that's why we're, we're asking, we're asking for a privacy fence. In other words, it's not a chain link fence. It's something that's better than a chain.
Yeah, I know. Okay.
Do we need the same material it's made out of?
We don't have, we're not saying material.
Should we? I mean, should we be saying that? I'm sorry.
You, that's, that's up to you. We just want a privacy fence installed on the, on the north.
Let Russ finish here. Go.
On, 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 on the north and the east side of the property.
Okay.
Uh, twenty foot buffer zone measured from the east property line prohibiting the parking, to keep things just a little further away from the house. The, the other, the other thing is that's where all the drainage is, yeah, anyway, in that twenty feet.
Right.
Okay?
Yep.
Uh, and, and he has agreed that he's gonna, uh, help with restoring the drainage. Install an entrance driveway on the south end of the property if and when the proposed truck route is constructed. It isn't the only entrance he will have. But we wanna, we want, in other words, if, if he pulls a semi in there, he's.
That just makes sense.
He's gonna have to come out on the east side.
Or south side.
On the west. If he pulls in from the south side, he's gonna have to pull out on the west side.
Yeah.
Because he's not gonna be able to turn around in there with a semi and actually utilize it the way he wants to utilize it. And you can add, subtract.
Right. So I just wanna get a background on where you guys came up with your.
All, all we're, all we're trying to do is, is get a little bit of visual separation for the neighborhood. Also, it's frankly a safety issue so we don't have kids running, running over there.
See, I, my, my whole thing is to, if he can park some of his equipment over here that isn't wrecking the streets today, I mean, that's part of the, that's, that's part of the deal here, you know? Because we're having to go fix that again over there. You know, just, it is what it is, I know. But I'm just saying, that is something that we can start avoiding here. So that's why I have no problem with that south entrance thing either.
Yep.
Okay.
Is your plan to replace that building that's there or add to it? Or what's your, what's your building plan there?
If, the owner's still renting it for six months to get the stuff out there. So we would fix it up to put something in there as far as like, the floors not poured through the whole thing and the building as far as I'm concerned isn't going away. I'm gonna use it to utilize it with other people.
Okay. So are you planning on putting additional buildings?
Not right now, no. It's a lot in a plumbing flow is what we want intended to move to alleviate.
Right. What I'm thinking about is prevent issues in the future. Do we, you know, do we say something about twenty foot buffer zone of what? Just for parking vehicles or anything? Just for parking? Should there be something added to that to say, no building shall be within X number of feet of the property line?
He was, he's, I thought he just gave him his conditional. He didn't have plans for it.
Lucas, what was that?
I just wanna read to you guys, uh, how these conditions work. It says, the planning commission may stipulate such conditions and restrictions upon the establishment, location, construction, maintenance and operation of the conditional use as deemed necessary. No alteration of conditional uses shall be permitted unless approved by the city council. So that just kinda tells you what these conditions are for.
The other thing, just to keep in mind, is let's say he sold the property, conditional uses don't go with the sale.
Right, right.
Conditional uses can get a sale. It, the zoning would remain. The zoning C three would remain, but conditional uses don't follow a sale.
I mean, one of the first things that came to mind for me was that the city would have the first right of refusal for any future purchases, transfer of ownership of this land.
That, that's, is he the lawyer?
It's, it's just a question. I mean, it, it's kinda one of the things we, doesn't matter to us that if this land ever came up for sale again, that the city would.
Can I interrupt? Because we talked to the city about originally trading for the land in Lagoon for this property. Uh, do a land swap for some of the property. So, I mean, we already, I, if that comes up.
I get it. I get it. I get it. But he's throwing it out there. I'm throwing it out there. I'm not saying we have to do that. I'm just.
Ryan, the only other situation would be somebody else comes up to you, catches you on the right day, and makes a deal and we don't even get notified of it.
That's my point.
That's maybe.
I have no problem notifying you guys of the first right.
Well, if we make a condition, then.
He went to you first before he came. It's all up to me. So.
I mean, especially if these conditional, conditions don't go with the sale.
If you don't go with the sale.
So, I mean, that, that's why at a minimum, I'd like to be able to say, okay, please, we can then decide, to your point, Sharon, that we can at least then decide if, if we want to do something with that or we want to repurpose that piece of land. Either we purchase it and repurpose it or something else, right, that we can have control over.
At some point in the future, this property, City Hall is not gonna be here, City Shop is not gonna be here, and what is this land go to? It goes to residential. It makes perfect sense, but that's neither here nor there.
If, if we, if we get the first right, you know, then we can maybe have a little say in what, how that happens.
We just put it on our land use plan and it's residential. I mean, that, that's. But anyway. I don't know that you can put that in a conditional use.
That's, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm just, you know, trying to understand what options we have.
Lucas, is that something?
The question I have on these conditions is how do you ensure if there's a fence up that there's a twenty foot buffer zone? You can't obviously go on private property if there's a fence up. The city's not able to go inside and police it. So you can put the condition there, but if there's a fence, how do we ensure that?
So like you said, it's only on the two sides.
It's on the two sides.
You said we're not, we're not, we're fencing the whole thing. We're just fencing the sides that are visible. And those would be with, those would be within the twenty foot buffer zone, correct? You, you put the fence outside.
I would like to put the fence, but we have to figure out the drainage because I would like to put a cobra.
Right.
The drainage needs to be fixed.
Right. But now, I mean, is that, what kind of parking twenty feet is what I'd like to verify? Because if I can put a trailer back there or something that's not got an engine that's gonna fire up, can that be used without twenty feet?
Not, not if they adopt number two up there. Preventing the parking store to get, split area.
Yeah, it sounds like the planning commission don't want anything within twenty feet.
Say that again?
Yeah.
It sounded to me like the planning commission did not want anything within that twenty feet.
I mean, when I first read this, I, I made the assumption that the privacy fence goes on the twenty foot property line. That, that's how I, that's how I interpreted it.
You, you can specify that.
If you had a twenty, if you have a fencer, what difference does it make if it's a trailer parked up next to it or not? I'd be more concerned about if the building got rented out to a noise maker some kind. I mean, can we? I know that sounded really dumb. Sorry, but.
No noise makers.
Yeah. I'm just saying, that's the one thing that has value out there is, is a building, if you rent it out, that we, do we have control over how it gets rented? As far as parking the trailer up against the fence, that's just, sorry, Russ, it doesn't make, that doesn't make sense to me. Because you've got the buffer of the fence.
I don't see how you could control who gets rented to. They'd be subject to the zoning for what the land is owed for. So how would you control what the renter does?
Is that true?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it says you can do, you can put conditions or restrictions on operation. It's one of the things that's in here is operation.
Correctly, if I'm wrong, the city council can also pull a conditional use permit.
If they're violated? If, if these are violated? Or what are you saying?
I'm saying that the, the city council doesn't grant a conditional use permit in perpetuity.
It's, it's basically the council can revoke the condition use permit if the conditions are violated.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I understood that part of it. Just trying to figure out here, is this what we, you guys wanna do some conditional use conditions? Do we want more, less?
Well, then I guess mine, only one was he stated he was gonna use it for such and such and such and such. Let's just make sure that that condition is in there so that it's not illegal to go outside that.
Okay.
Conditional use for what he wants to use it for. And I'd say the twenty foot buffer zone, uh, maybe on the other two sides, if you don't have a fence, but on the two fence sides, parking a trailer up against a fence on the inside just.
Were you guys thinking more for the noise or aesthetics? Park a trailer up there, you know, depending on how high the fences, the trailer will stand out. Were you guys just thinking the noise or aesthetics? We came up with that one. That's why I'm just trying to figure out yours, where, where that came from. Noise? Aesthetics?
What we're looking at is a two hundred foot restriction that we used to have.
Okay.
Yeah. We want something in there just to separate them from.
Just being against the law.
Backyards.
Okay.
So do we have the privacy fence? Obviously, we don't want like a five foot or four foot privacy fence. It's gotta be.
According to ordinance, as it says.
What does the ordinance say? How high does it need to be?
It can go up to eight feet in commercial.
It could go, we, so we could say that we want it.
You could require an eight foot. You could require a six foot.
Do they?
I mean, an eight foot is going to be, you know, now the question is that back drainage. So if you're, if you're wanting to build something or redo some of that drainage area, that's, then that's an issue for the residents. That's gonna impact their property, right?
Right now, there is no drainage. You can just drain in between the two properties. It doesn't go anywhere. This is just cat tail back there, Brian. So I mean, it's, it's gotta come up with some other drainage schema back there.
Do we have Jimmy? Do you know anything about the drainage over there?
It goes every which way, but we're supposed to. It's kinda what I told. I, I don't know.
Right, but it's not, there's not a proper drainage back there. It pools and holds water.
Yeah, I've, I've been told stories from city staff on how it was supposed to be and how it is now and how it was and I.
I have no problem fixing the drainage to, or maybe you guys want to set.
Does it make sense to grant the conditional use? Let's get our engineer to look at the drainage, figure out where the best place for the fence goes, make it eight foot high and do it the right way with our, using our engineer on that.
So then we're gonna incur, we're gonna incur cost.
We're benefiting the residents by fixing the drainage.
I, I think regardless, it sounds like the drainage needed to be.
We're gonna incur cost just for the engineer to willing to take care of the cost of it.
He's good, he said he's gonna take care of the cost of the drainage. We just wanna have our input on it so it's done correctly.
Then is, are we not talking the entire length of that whole, not just behind that one property, but all the way from here all the way down? Because then that would be.
Yeah, your road's gonna go right there. You don't have, there's a bull road.
Well, no, we're talking about the drainage here.
From the north to the south, by the nine all those homes backs up right here to this, you're gonna have that same issue all the way down. So is that what you're talking, what you're suggesting?
He's just, he's just become across here and down. Not, not any of that.
Well, why don't we just look at the range?
We can look at it.
We can't. I don't think there's a problem north, but, well, that's where I said, let's get.
I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, let, let's get Jimmy to look because I don't know for fact either. So.
If there is drainage issues, when we build the truck route, if we build the truck route, we can, we can fix it with that and get it back to the lagoon where it's supposed to be, where it works to be back until it created twenty seven. So, I mean, we don't have to solve all the problems. Let me see, get the area where he's talking, excuse me, talking, ambulance city all worked that way. It's just trying to look ahead a little bit here, what does wind up going together here? Because eventually, some road, form of road will go in down there. And when we do that, agreed, that's probably when we should make sure that drainage all gets squared away because it has been a long time like that.
Yep.
Okay.
So fixed drainage issues in conjunction with proposed Eighth Avenue truck route?
There you go.
Oh, I keep that in a pen, just fix the drainage, you know, lets us as a city.
Yeah, I don't know if we have that.
As it is right now.
I think about the eight foot fence. You want to put that in there?
Yeah, the eight foot fence.
Okay, let's do that. Let's add that in there, eight foot.
So the privacy fence installed in accordance with city ordinances not to exceed eight feet, because that's your ordinance, or at eight feet.
At eight.
At eight feet.
Your ordinance says not to exceed eight feet.
What kind of fence is it supposed to be?
Something very, very expensive.
Brick and mortar.
We'll go shopping.
Dave and I will go pick one up.
Exactly.
Yeah, we can probably get somebody to deliver it for him too, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
You can't pick it up.
But yeah, okay, so if you add that, I mean, other than that, I really don't see, you know, on here really.
The buffer, the twenty foot buffer on the two sides.
That's basically drainage, right?
Yeah.
So. The twenty foot buffer is always on the east property line.
Right. Yeah.
Because it's just grass next to us. He runs up against us.
Well, you you gravelled that over, right?
I did, for the most part. I mean, there's still some of it left. For the most part, were the big group of trees on the end, but the rest were all dead. And I had, I sent my letter in and to Perry and brought him out there four times. He gave me approval to go that far with the ground.
Okay.
And that's not an error to have to have done that.
No, right.
There is no restriction on on the parking as long as it's not totally impermeable.
Right. Okay.
Anybody got anything else?
Got that addition in there with the eight foot fence.
What was the?
The eight foot, I mean.
I got the eight foot fence, but what about the buffer zone?
Yeah, would you want to do the twenty foot?
If there's gravel, park on the gravel. Right? I'm not going to go nitpick with a tape measure.
Plenty of potential is put gravel, throw the whole thing in the park.
Yeah.
It is almost already.
It was up. I'm just saying.
It makes sense.
There's a twenty foot buffer in place.
Simplify it. Up to where the fence is.
I mean, I can go as far as leaving the trucks so they hook back in there so the engines aren't within that twenty feet, but if I can still use the trailer, park trailers there, that'll be.
I guess the question is, is the fence, are we going to allow the fence to be on the property line?
I think the question goes to planning and zoning. Is that acceptable? What is based on?
To put the eight foot fence on the property line. I think that was your point in putting the buffer zone.
It doesn't go on the property line though. Don't you, it doesn't, a fence typically go off the property line?
Yeah, it would by one.
Do you?
I I mean.
Or I, my understanding is if both neighbors agree, you can go on the property line. Otherwise, it has to stay at one foot.
Yep.
I think that's what I heard too.
But with the potential drainage, is that not going to be potentially sharing property lines?
There's no drainage on the other properties. It's all online.
I'm just saying, so if that fence, is that fence going to be in the way of drainage if it's on the property line? Or a foot off the property line?
What I was planning is to culler that whole thing once we get, so then it wouldn't be an issue.
I don't know what drainage works.
I'm looking to the expert over there. I say let Jimmy.
So do we do we do we put something in there?
Because the fence has to be.
The culler would have to be on its property.
So do we do we put something in here to say the drainage cannot impact the residential neighbors? Is there something so that we make sure that? You know, if there are changes, like you're going to put in a culler, that's going to resolve resolve the drainage in your property, but what if that negatively impacts?
He has to have a permit for the culler. And.
No, no.
No, I agree. I know. I know. It's all all of our permit stuff.
And and culverts are all engineered.
Right, okay.
There we go.
Yes, I'm sure.
All right.
That was for the front line.
Oh, here we go.
No, I'm cool. That's my mask. Make sure we cut.
Okay, so.
No, that's our, let's get the points. Let's move on.
Take these three, that one change with the eight foot fence, that's what I'm understanding at this point, right? Okay, so then can I get a motion to accept?
Time out.
Go.
It's it's these three and then the four was that it had to stay as the use? Because you started that or is that not one of them?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense.
He's defined the use that he was planning on using.
Because I added that on here.
Yep.
Okay.
So there's four.
Yep.
Okay.
Anything else?
Okay, I'm glad you asked. The planning is only for these recommendations because this does help.
Well.
Yep.
Doesn't matter what I think about, think about this. What does matter is that we have a normality process.
Yeah, fair enough.
So this was part of the normality process.
Okay. Anybody got anything else? Otherwise, I want to entertain a motion.
A motion for the conditional use permit conditions that we've defined or acceptance of a conditional use permit based on these conditions.
Okay.
All right.
Get a second? Dave's on for.
I'll second.
Okay, Brian's got a second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 No.
Okay. Sharon was in no will on that.
I favor the bearings, I favor the conditional use.
Gotcha. Okay.
You got it.
We are going to move on.
And then just so the council is aware, we will have to do a second reading of the ordinance at your next meeting because it is an ordinance, so we have two readings. So you're all aware.
Okay.
Ordinance, you mean?
The zoning.
Zoning, okay. When you say ordinance like that, like you're reading ordinance of some type, you're stating we're going to reread the rezon.
The zoning ordinance.
Getting nitpicky now, all right?
Are we good?
We're all getting punchy now. Thank you, guys.
Yep. Okay, Lucas, on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor, the next item I have is second reading of the rezon for Lost River Fourth Edition. Yep, that is what I asked.
Have you got more? Oh.
He wants to leave too.
Uh, this, Mr. Mayor, is just for those, um, those three lots in Lost River Fourth. It is changing it from R two to R six. And like I said, this is the second reading. The first reading was done November twentieth.
And nothing's changed?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, so. John, Sharon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There we go. That was an easy one. Next.
Mr. Mayor, the next item I have is the water purchase agreement that we discussed, and the council requested that I add a provision. A termination clause because this is that, the Water Services Agreement to Visto Industrial Edition.
Oh, yeah.
And so there's no termination clause and it was a thirty year term. So we added that. I sent it to Jerry with, um, Casrural Water and they agreed to the changes. So I have that here. I believe I sent it last week, last Wednesday.
Which one is that?
It's for Casrural, um.
Lucas, I mean, I put his name on the back of it. Can you like, where the names are, can you make them bigger? And then you can see where.
Right here. No, that's just.
That's the next one that we're doing. Uh, right there, water purchase agreement. Yep, that guy. So I added uh, six, C six on page three. Right there. Because I know there's discussion of the city providing water potentially, and this just says, if the city does want to, they can, with sixty days written notice.
I'm going to approve.
Okay.
Okay, Brian, any questions?
Cool, what's second?
Um, before we engage in this, are you okay with the rates, Brian? Have you integrated this into your water rates related to how this will affect?
Well, for now, we're not, we're not going to be collecting water rates for these homes.
These aren't homes. This is, this is the, um.
Visto Industrial.
Visto Industrial. This is the water that's being provided to Visto's industrial out there. We're doing the billing back. We're rebilling this to our.
Your bulk user to the river water.
Yeah, we're billing it back to those people out there.
This was where we were talking about having to
Different rate structure.
Change the rate structure based on this for them.
I assume he's never going to get done. Okay.
I think he just said that.
Just shoot me here. Yeah, so we have, we're going to have to make a change to the resolution yet again. Yet again, so. Okay, so.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Yep.
Yep. They have their first and second, so that was my quick question.
Can we have the first and second, please?
Yeah, who was first and second?
I was first.
Brian was first, but it was John was second, okay. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There we go.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the next item I have is this is that agreement that that gentleman that came in earlier had to discuss, and I sent this to you guys too, and it's, yep, right there, Councilman Schmidt just pulled it up. It's a project that was done a while ago to improve drainage, and there was a deal with the Water Resource District and the city that upon, um, the bond term expiring for this improvement district, the city would assume ownership and operation of these improvements. Uh, and so there was an agreement that was sent to the former city attorney in two thousand thirteen. However, no action was taken, so I have that agreement and it's included in this. And then that first page that Councilman Schmidt had there, uh, broke down what the project included. Yep, right there.
So this is back in two thousand two?
Yeah, the improvement, the improvement district's from two thousand one, and then I think the bonds were paid off in two thousand thirteen. And so, yeah, I mean, this, the city then annexes property in sometime in that, in that timeframe. And so now there's issues of nobody's maintaining it, and it obviously does not look appealing to the residents. So this agreement says that the city will take ownership of the improvements. So it says following retirement of the Holman's bonds, ownership of the project will automatically vest in the city without the need for any bill of sale or any other written document, and the city will own, operate, manage, and maintain the project. And I did have the city engineer take a look at this to let me know what was going on.
May I ask a question about this? I pay taxes on this every year. So if the city's going to take ownership, are they still going to be able to, uh, you pay maintenance fees on this?
You sure that's this or that's the diversion? You pay maintenance, you pay taxes on the diversion?
I pay maintenance fees on the diversion, I pay maintenance fees on this drain. Uh, everyone out there in that area.
You're talking about that area?
In that, in that area is paying for it. So what I'm, what I'm asking you as a, as a city is there are some, uh, there should be some funds someplace that go towards this maintenance.
Or those, each should stop, right? And we as the city should be charging you.
Yes, yes, you should.
Well, I've been collecting.
And basically what it is is you pay by the value that that you receive from it.
Right.
I pay this much because there's not a single drain around here that does me any good. I'm above the five hundred years left on it. But I get to drive on the road so I can.
You get to participate.
I get to participate. And what I'm saying is there may, there's a whole lot of houses down here that are, that are paying this, I do believe.
Tuba County.
That's the Southeast Casrural.
Right, so that's the problem is the money went to them and we have no right to claim that. They didn't spend it. And what we can do by it.
No, but what I'm saying is that they're.
If we take it over now, we would get that down, right?
No.
I don't, I don't see how. I don't think it just transfers like that. Any maintenance fees that they're collecting through Southeast Casrural Water?
What do you think it's called, Russ? On your taxes?
I don't recall.
Other fee?
Because I got two as well. One is Southwest, Southeast Water Resource District. Then that's called consolidated, but then I have a drain that says Cheyenne Maple Flood Control District Number Two Maintenance, and I assume that was the diversion.
Yeah. All I, all I'm saying is it may be worthwhile for the city to, uh, find out.
Yes.
Because people who are currently paying this should probably continue to pay it, but then darn well better for.
It's got to go to the right bucket then too, I mean, that's.
Right, so in other words, we're paying into the county to maintain it.
No, is it going to Southeast? This is going to Southeast.
Hold it southeast, whatever, yeah. But we're having to pay for it.
Because what he might be paying might not be for this. And that's, that's really the question.
Well, yeah.
You're paying and where's that, what's that going to? Is it really this exactly?
I actually got the vote on this one.
Right, but what you're paying may not be for this. It might be for something else.
No, it was for this. It started.
Yeah, this says that the district issued bonds to finance and fund construction of the project, and the district levies special assessments against benefiting properties for purposes of paying all amounts due on the bonds issued to finance the project, including all principal and interest. And it's following retirement of the bonds, ownership will vest in the city, yada, yada, yada. The district will have no further or additional obligations regarding the project, and the district will cease any further assessments regarding the assessment district.
If there was ever any maintenance or anything in that period of time of the bond, it would have been included in that original agreement, at which time now it's all, the expectation is that's all been consumed. Because now it's all paid off. Whether they did it or not is another question, but it's now our responsibility to take over that maintenance.
Well, and are we getting that money? And don't even realize we're getting it, to me.
I doubt it. Yeah, so I guess what's the action item here, Lucas?
To approve this agreement to assume ownership of those improvements. So basically, ownership and operation.
Uh, I don't know if we can do that to, Jim, are we going to have to do an assessment to understand the maintenance cost of this?
It's it's a, it's a, it's a similar pumping station to what's out in Lost River, which you're already taking over there. It's, um, duplex, some, uh, pump system, stormwater runs to build up pumps out, similar to Chestnut too, so it's not.
But the point is, is that there will be, the cost for us to take this over, we have to figure out where that's going to come from.
Well, if a pump, if a pump would die.
Before we can approve this agreement.
If a pump would die or anything like that, you'd be responsible for that if the controls get fried or something.
So the question is.
I don't weaken us.
But the question is, if that money is being collected off of taxes, where is it going and how do we get it if we're responsible? That's the question.
That my, my assertion was that they've been collecting that to pay off the original construction. The original construction and maintenance, whatever it was, just like if we did the construction, they they maintained it for fifteen years and now it's, now it's, we're done with it. It's yours. So now it's our responsibility. So whether they use that money or not, it's not our purview to go ask them that.
Well, it has to be. The money would be in its time. If either county is collecting the money, right? So somewhere, there's a bucket of money that has that title on it.
It's no.
We need to know what it's called, because we looked up mine and there was a Holman Brink.
That's the one.
That's the one.
That's the one, so I paid it last year.
Yeah, it's.
I'm sure you paid advance.
It's called Stormwater Improvement District Number Two Thousand One Dash Four.
Where's the money go? Because it's in the county somewhere. They have a bucket with that name on it.
Okay, the other question we got for you. In twenty thirteen.
That's what I thought.
So if the bond expired in twenty thirteen, then why are the residents still being charged for that? Right, so we we've got some digging to do with Southeast Casrural Water.
Okay, so my other question is, if it was paid off in twenty thirteen, when did the city supposedly take it over?
Well, we haven't yet because we didn't say.
Was there an assumption that the county thought we took it over?
Well, that's what we don't know.
Okay, so.
Well, there are figures.
Has anybody been out there to maintain it?
That's the problem. That's why nobody has done any maintenance to it, because they thought we were taking over and and the legal document has been sitting for, since twenty thirteen.
And the the grass and the appearance is one thing. I'm talking about the guts of the mechanical part.
Yes.
Is if we're going into potential water season in the spring, should we be looking at that now?
Well, and the other question is, if you're paying it, where's that money going? Well, and the other question is, if you're paying it, where's that money going? It's in a bucket somewhere, where is it?
But, I asked, I'd ask.
Can I just read section three of the agreement? So it says interim operation and maintenance, prior to retirement of the Holman's bonds and prior to transfer of ownership of the project to the city, in accordance with this agreement, the city will operate and maintain the project. Prior to transfer of ownership, the district will levy annual maintenance levies regarding the assessment district as necessary to fund operation and maintenance of the project, and will reimburse the city for the city's expenses incurred in operating and maintaining the project. So the bonds must not be expired yet, and that's probably why you're all still paying on it, so you should be getting money from the district for your expenses.
Well, we haven't incurred any expenses yet.
Correct, and that's why we haven't gotten any money.
Because we haven't done anything.
Yeah, we've done anything yet. So.
I, I think we have some questions to ask.
Yeah, we've gotta go, we've gotta go meet with these folks.
Give me your question, or do you want me, I can talk to them?
Yeah.
And somebody go inspect it? See if it's still working?
It works.
Yeah?
I know, but does it gonna blow up next week?
Right.
That's the thing, yeah.
So I guess there, there's two parts, and if one is an assessment of, is there any risk of us, you know, is there anything that we need to be done to this thing? So I guess there's one part of this, us directing Jim to go do an assessment of it?
Yep. But here's the thing though, okay, so if we took, if we all voted tonight to take the thing over, and you went out there tomorrow and said, oh my gosh, this thing's gonna fall apart tomorrow, okay? We could still get it paid for because they're collecting revenue.
Should be able to.
But that's the second question, we gotta go meet with Southeast Casserole Water and understand how much they collect.
I'm not saying we do it tonight, I'm just saying if we did it tonight and you had found cracks and we had that thing fixed right away, we could probably get funding for it, that's what I'm getting at.
Well, we already answered, yeah, and we could bring this up. Do some new diligence first on it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's the question we wanna know.
I don't, I don't wanna vote on this tonight.
No.
I don't think we know enough to vote on this.
It's sat for four years, it doesn't need to be.
Exactly, what's another couple of weeks gonna take? Okay, so we'll table that one, so let's get those questions.
But who is, should I ask questions, or are you gonna ask questions?
You and Brian will together do it now.
Well, I can do it.
I think it's between Jim and you and I, for us to go figure this out and come up with a list of questions, and then we can meet with Southeast, whoever's responsible, I don't know who.
Southeast Cass.
Southeast Cass.
Who is that?
To help out Mr. Nielsen in his question, for his concern.
His concern is that nobody's maintaining it.
Right, so there's actually funds for maintenance of the equipment and the grounds?
Find out.
Maintenance and operations.
That's the question, that's we gotta go find out, that's we gotta go find out, and that's we gotta meet with whoever the representative from the Southeast Casserole.
Mark Rodchuck is their chairman, and there's, there's three people on their board.
Okay, so that's, that's probably one of the things we need to do is. So we can get some of these.
I'll see if we can add it to their next agenda, uh.
I'm almost guessing that a phone call, guys, could square this away in about five minutes.
Oh, you think so?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So can I just ask other engineers?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think there needs to be a lot of babble session here, this is pretty much just asking the question.
I'm just gonna shoot an email to, to their secretary, she has all the answers.
See if we can set up a phone call, that's fine.
Yeah, she knows all the.
Couple of questions, we should get this squared away and be ready to go next time around. Alright. Next.
Whoever issues.
Mr. Mayor, I'm done.
You're done? Hell, it's only been an hour, Lucas, come on.
Mr. Mayor can ask a question? Jimmy, is there anything imperative that has to be answered tonight, or can we delay these last things until the next meeting? It is almost fifteen.
You published your report, right?
Yeah, I published a report, nothing really new on there, I, I just think we, we should improve the change order and approve the, uh, the, the tap grant does have to be talked about tonight, because that's due tomorrow.
Well, I guess, I guess the question, the one question I do have is SSL connection, can you give us a?
I give you a very brief one.
Update on that one.
The, the wet well is in in Lo, in Lost River, the valve vault is in in Lost River, there's, the plumbing is not done between the two yet, but there is a pipe from Lost River all the way to a manhole in front of, uh, I forget what her name is on Wall Street, so it is connected to the existing system. So as soon as the pumps and all that get installed, hopefully within a week or so, we can start. Yeah, I guess electrical service has to come in.
Essentially, all construction along the wall right now is.
Done.
Done.
Done, the long wall, the pipe is into, uh, almost up to, it's up to both the railroad tracks, they haven't made the crossing underneath seventeen yet, but they'll, uh, do that at that time, so everything is in place for a temporary connection to an existing manhole, to the existing system for operation very soon.
Do they have a projected operate, projected operation date when?
Within a couple of weeks, is what I was told this afternoon.
But right now, they can do that, they're not held up by a blizzard that might happen?
They are held up by the blizzard today, that supposedly happened, uh, but they're gonna start tomorrow with the excavation for the other lift station behind the church. They're gonna get that in yet this year too, that's, uh.
The lift station behind?
There's a, a lift station behind the church that pushes the sewage up to Dairy Creek, that one's gonna go in yet this year too.
Oh, okay.
So.
But that's not critical right now?
Not critical, no.
For us to get Lost River connected.
No, not critical, but that's where they'll be working, the rest of the stuff is, is get the parts and, and put it, put it together.
So their, their plan right now is to, by the next meeting, they should have Lost River connection operational?
If all goes well, yes, that's what I was told this afternoon.
We want to report back, Jack, that you were flushing your toilet, it's.
He's flushing, it's we're not taking.
Yes, we're not taking it, it's coming to the loo.
That's the point.
Yep. Okay, okay, um, I do have the first estimate for the SSL project, uh, three hundred forty thousand ninety dollars and twenty cents, this is for all the work along the wall, lift station, and.
This document, the progressive estimate?
Yep. We're about, I think I'm a little high on this, twenty seven percent completed, I think it's closer to the twenty, I did a little math there, but, um, anyways, this is just the first progressive estimate, it's partial payment for work completed to date, so nothing too extravagant about that, pays for the pumps and some other, uh, components for the lift station, so.
Right now, we're coming in.
Right now, we're pretty, we're, we haven't, we are on budget, we haven't come in.
Even with, even with additional cost of materials?
For the, um, that, that's, we're still within our contingency by quite a bit, we, we filled out the paperwork for, for more money, I shouldn't say more money, Jack will think something's really wrong. But, uh, we're within our contingencies on that, so, I won't.
Okay.
Uh, was that part of the consent agenda? I can't remember.
There was one piece in there.
Was that for KPH?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, then that was, that was probably that one.
Where are we at then with bonds for this project?
They're done, this is funded through the SRF, so, so that's all taken care of, it's all in place.
Okay.
Uh, the other thing we have is a change order for a fence deduction on Lost River, there was, uh, if a fence would have been put into the planned dimensions, it would have covered up the landscaping at the end, the second entrance into Lost River, basically benefiting one, one homeowner, right, Jack? So you wanted to pull out the fencing to showcase the landscaping coming into it, it's a net deduct of six thousand eight hundred seventy nine dollars and forty nine cents, so. I don't know if you have any.
I like those numbers.
I don't know if you have any comments on that, Jack, or if that's pretty much what it is.
Sixteen seventy nine.
We just, the, uh, the fence extended already right away, we intended it, and that's the landscaping, so it was covered with landscaping. I don't buy it, it's on the post and so before they put up the, the.
Panels, yeah.
Called, then people calls, change order, we miss.
That's something we would need a motion on, to accept this change order for deducting, deducting.
Alright.
Dave and John.
Made a motion, David was first on that one, John was the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the last thing is the tap grant, I did forward this out, sent it to Sharon, she did have one comment, if anybody else had any comments, you can let me know. Um, Sharon, it doesn't matter to me whichever one we pick, whichever one you feel is more appropriate, we can, I can change it in a heartbeat, so.
I don't remember the question.
Oh, you had, it was in the, what category fits the project, we have, uh.
It was a category.
Yep, uh, for those who don't know, this project was put in for the continuation along Cairo Seventeen. Um, I, I was told we have the parking rec grant for the first phase of it, which gets us to about Brink Drive, and this would continue up to, uh, Seventy Sixth Avenue. And, uh, the reason this section was chosen is there's quite a bit of paperwork, supporting documents, and, uh, supportive letters of support that go into this, and it was a real time crunch to do any other project than continuation of this, so we'll see.
It also made sense because it would be nineteen.
Sure.
Which would then put us right in place for the school, so.
So, um.
It was kind of, it was kind of a noteworthy to do it for that continuation.
A wrecked out trail.
It's no different, we used this project last year, um, for our parking rec grant, so it was, when we did that one, we did this or the other, depending on do we put them in as either or, depending on which one we got on the tap one, if we got it, we're gonna do the section, if we didn't get it, we're doing the first section. Obviously, we need to get the tap grant, we got the parking rec grant, so the first section.
So you would basically do the first section, and I saw it here.
Right, and then the second bike, yep, so that's it.
Okay, you mean you're done?
That, as long as you guys wanna submit it that way, I'll, I'll take the draft off of it, change whatever.
Yeah, send it to me, I want to sign it.
Get it off.
Okay.
Get it off, that's all I have.
Alright, for, for older reports, I see a lot of blanks, should we keep them that way unless you guys got really something you wanna talk about?
I'll, I'll get quick, cause mine is just, we got approval on the, on job description for city administrator, um, they're working on the, um, brochure that they're gonna send out, so hopefully the goal is by, I believe next week we'll start posting, probably next week to start posting the position.
Okay, good, awesome. Okay, you guys, okay? We traditionally give Christmas cards to city staff every year around this time, I'm bringing it up for you guys' consideration.
Matt, what have we given in the past?
Two hundred?
Two hundred. Make a motion that we give the similar, uh, poor bonus that we give to our, our Christmas gift, to our, all of our city employees.
Okay, Dave, Dave makes a motion, Sharon does a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. And, uh.
Don't even ask me.
Well, you say no, no report, so I'm just going with it, man.
I'll have some stuff for you next time.
Alright, fair enough. Motion to adjourn, anybody? John's up. Who's second?
I don't need one.
Dave, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Got you home after the lizard.